I once had a gun, it was all too. I needed things, it was too much to lose. With little more than me, with even less. When I had it all, I walked on the floor. And we walk, and we walk, and we walk. Till it's dead, and it wasn't long. In my sleep, I go home and go down. When I heard water sound, it's too loud. What a joy, what a joy, that I felt in my eyes. But in every shadow, window, I dream of something fine. Then it's better off than I thought. And we think of another world. Wherever I walk, I always have you. I sleep with hope, where it's too long.
I climb every mountain, for a child's love. Follow every highway, every path you know. I climb every mountain, for every dream. Follow every rainbow, till you find your dream. A dream that will be, all the love you can give. Every day of your life, for as long as you live. I climb every mountain, for every dream. Follow every rainbow, till you find your dream. I climb every mountain, for a child's love. Follow every rainbow, till you find your dream. A dream that will be, all the love you can give. Every day of your life, for as long as you live. I climb every mountain, for every dream. Follow every rainbow, till you find your dream. Till you find your dream.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to play the Wedding Song by Bo R. Green. And this story is about a wedding, about a young girl who's preparing for her wedding. It starts off where she's getting ready, and then court attorneys come and take her to church. Then there's the actual wedding song, and then the court attorneys take her and the husband out to paradise. For my last selection, I'd like to play an Italian folk song called Come Back to Santa.
An awful lot coming in St. Joseph's for the last two years. I don't know why we haven't drank since our people before. We won't forget ourselves.
The papers in the book.
Our secretary is lying in her minutes. I'd like to officially welcome so many new faces here tonight. Some of you are members of the district I know who haven't been at meetings, but they're glad. Some of you are new members, we'd like to welcome you to our district meeting. And some of you I know are out of town districts. And I just wish we had time to welcome all of you. And hear where you are from, and what you're doing in Atlanta. I think it would be interesting to all of us, and we want to take time for that. I understand there's a new member here from Newton County. You know, Newton County is part of this district, and I don't believe that we have had many members from that area. Maybe she didn't make it. You're welcome, they're just the same. At this time, we'll have the minutes of our January 9 meeting.
We didn't meet her, and we didn't send out a fax.
Well, I have.
Yes, good enough.
And they're in your book. Back of your book.
January the 9th meeting, 1964, regular meeting of the 5th District TSN was held on Thursday, January 9th, 1964, at 4:30 PM at St. Joseph's in Primm. Called to order by the prayers of Mrs. Garland, prayer by Mr. Francis Hammond-Chaplin. Roll call NSA Section 15, General Duty 3, EACT Section 15, Occupational Health 1, Public Health 6, Private Duty 40, making a total of 60 members present. Move to approve the last minutes of meeting of this association, Mr. Bryce and Ms. Sherrill carried. Report of Treasurer, District Report, read by the Treasurer, Ms. Meeks. Motion to accept this report and place on file, Mr. Dixon and Ms. Lott carried. Registry Report by the Treasurer, motion to accept and place this report on file, Ms. Dixon and Ms. Davis, motion carried. Executive Secretaries' Report, Ms. Atkins read her written report. Reports of Standing Committee's Program, Ms. Hammond, Chairman reported. It was moved to reverse the order of the day by having the program first on the agenda. Ms. Bryce and Dixon amended the motion that this being the first meeting of the year, that we follow the agenda. The vote was 34 and 31 against. I think that's an error, because I think we voted that this would be our 31 to... That's right, that's right. We voted to have the, to go on with the agenda. Printing, Mr. Atkins reported. Legislation, Ms. Ditchfield, Chairman read her report. Recommendations that the 5th District TSN support the scholarship bill. Second, that the 5th District Chair may support the GSMA Legislative Committee's position on the teriatric bill. If it should be introduced in January 1964 legislature. This position being that the needs of teriatric nursing can be met under the existing laws. There is that the 5th District TSN supports GSNA's position related to the King Anderson Law and this, about this. That is, we not support this bill because the Currie Mills Bill in Georgia covers one-third of the health needs for the population over 65 years old. Motion to adopt this recommendation, Ms. Ditchfield and Ms. Genevieve Jones, motion carried. Membership, Ms. Martha Davis, Chairman read her report, which stated 1964 membership to date, 239 active members and 2 associate members. Official publications, Ms. Atkins reported. Report of sections, NSA reported a Della meeting was held, was held, was well attended. General Duty meeting is being arranged, Private Duty, written report in district meter. New business, it was moved that the district goal record as encouraging participation in SOS program, Ms. Orson Genevieve Jones carried. It was moved that the 5th District TSN register a protest to the TSN Board regarding certain actions taken in the pre and post convention board meetings regarding recruitment and that they be asked to reconsider their action in terms of providing for cooperative recruitment efforts between TSN and GSLN, and not further disunity. And that this motion and firing comments be sent to the TSN Board. Ms. Ditchfield and Ms. Bryce, copy of the protest is on file. Four, four to six, opposed 18, and the motion is carried. Program for the day was History of Nursing presented by Ms. Erin Ditchfield. Move to adjourn at 6:00 PM permitted by the 16th Executive Secretary.
I move these minutes be read as, be approved as read.
Any discussion, those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no, motion is carried. We thought we would delay the roll call until we were sure everyone who is coming is here. I believe with our musical program coming first. But those who couldn't make the 7:30 date line and see us now, and I'll ask the secretary to call the roll by section.
Administered, NSA.
How many lists?
Twenty-two.
General Duty. General Duty. Just six, seven. Occupational Health. One. Private Duty. Only five Private Duties. Public Health. Seventy-seven. I didn't count my sixes. And I didn't count U V's.
That's why I... That's 79. That's 23 for EACT.
Twenty-four, because you, you won and I'm one, and then Ms. Garland is Public Health.
Whoever's down it too.
You did seventy-nine.
That's 79, 79 prison.
We'll listen to a report of the Treasurer at this time, Ms. May.
Start taking the tab. Out here, this is poor, out here. Fifth District, they ought to be poor. The books were extended by young Garber Cuthbert for the year 1963, and with a catalog. Exhibit 8, assets, cash, general fund, $3,343.17. Nurse's Service Fund, savings account, $35.61. Office Change Fund, $25. USAV Fund, add cost, tax, $1,499.12. Wellness side, $1,177.5. Office transfer restrictions, Note 1, $1,094.65. Total assets, $5,669.18. White Velvet and Russian Embassy, and we've got payroll, tax, $168.63. Due to Georgia State Nurse Association, $3,449. Notice that in 1930, 19... December 31st, 1963, $2,041.55. Total of health is a mention, $5,669.18. This payment was prepared on the cash basis of 10, office transfer restrictions are saved at cost with no allowance for the protection. Now this is exhibit B, income dues, $35,181.50. Subscription, American Journal of Nurses, $200.20. Misalated, $200.24.43. Expenses, Georgia State Nurse Association, $24,354.75. Flyer, $95.49. Rent, $762. American Journal of Nurses, subscription, $182.50. Telephone, $680.91. Space America, $538.14. Posting, mailing, and misalated expenses, $1,049.50. Legal, add order, $345. Gifts and awards, $109.61. Section expenses, $201.90. District meter expenses, $770.34. Payroll and property tax, $216.80. Office supply expenses, $1,648.53. Excess of expenditure over income, $1,151.50. Now the balance for December 1962, $2,193.12. Less expense, less excess of expenditure over at the above, $1,151.60. Balance December 31st, 1963, $2,41.55. Due to reported income add point, the dues cost $35,181.50. Above includes $30,143.75. 1963 dues, and $5,377.5. 1964 dues collected in 1963. Of the 1964 dues collected, $3,459 is included in the above expenses, the Georgia State Nurse Association. Now, this next report is the audit of the official register.
I move the acceptance... Yes. I move the acceptance of the fifth district audit report.
Been moved in seconds of the, uh, audit report for fifth district, the accepted place on file. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contra, no. Motion is carried. Now, this is the nurses professional register, and this is the... We have two reports for that, but one was up to November, and then December, completing the report for the year. We had the books audited at the time, and we changed it back to the secretary's, and then, and at the end of the year, to get the full report. And it says cash, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and fourteen cents. Furniture and fixtures, so rent paid, one hundred and twenty-five. Now, this is for December, just a month of December, and then I'll give it as a whole. Two, uh, furniture and fixtures, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven, twenty-three, and the total assets, five thousand, five hundred, fifty-five dollars and thirty cents. Life benefit and nursing expenses. Current payroll taxes, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents. And exhibit B, and nursing expenses, exhibit B, five thousand, two hundred, seventy-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Total life health and nursing expenses, five thousand, five hundred, fifty-five dollars and thirty cents. Now, that is, they have the exhibit A. This is exhibit B. Income from the professional nurses dues for nineteen sixty-two. Two hundred and forty-seven dollars, fifty cents. Nineteen sixty-three dues, fifteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Total, fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Non-professional nurses dues. This is sixty-two, forty dollars. Nineteen sixty-three dues, four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four. And the total, total was twenty thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-three cents. Now, the expenses, salaries, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, thirty-one dollars. Supplies, five hundred, twelve dollars and fifty-three cents. Telephone and telegraph, five hundred, thirty-four dollars and five cents. Rent, one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Insurance, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Audit, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Convention, two hundred dollars. Taxes and life, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Taxes and payroll taxes, nine hundred, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Dues and subscription, five dollars. Misalage expenses, thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Posting, one hundred dollars. Flowers, thirty dollars and twenty-six cents. Total, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and four cents. Ex- excess of expenses over income, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. The balance for December nineteen sixty-two, seven thousand, five hundred, forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Excess of expenses over income above, two thousand, two hundred, sixty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Balance of November nineteen sixty-three, five thousand, two hundred, seventy-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I move the acceptance and place on file of the registry audit report for through November the thirtieth, nineteen sixty-three.
It's due, no, it's due December.
December. Oh.
She read that.
Uh-huh.
Very exciting.
All right.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contra, no. Motion is carried. And who want the registry report to be the financial report? The nurses professional register and the financial report for February nineteen sixty-four. Balance forward, February first, nineteen sixty-four, three thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Income, membership dues from bill of health, two thousand, six hundred, eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Salaries, one thousand, three hundred, nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Rent, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Telephone and advertisements, forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Individual assistance, posting, eleven dollars and sixty-four cents. Total, one thousand, five hundred, four dollars and eighty cents. Clearing bank, agreed with state, four thousand, nine hundred, ninety dollars and sixty-three cents. Now, the... That, when this report was made up for February, the dues paid by the R M. For one, one hundred and eighty-two, for the life and health for nurses, fifty-one, and for the life and underwriting rate, seven.
I move the acceptance of this report.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contra, no. These figures may not mean too much, just isolated from the, what's the, uh, total program, but we have to have the, have your approval, obviously, so we can place them on the ballot. We'd like to hear from the executive secretary at this time.
At the time, the meter was go to press, we were about a hundred and thirty-three members, uh, decreased from last year, and that, of course, is one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is almost twice as much as the meter costs us, seven hundred and seventy a year. So, you did not get a March issue, however, we hope that we won't have to miss anymore. Uh, twenty years, we've only skipped two, so I think that's a pretty good record, and we will have the audit report in the meter, in the, in the next issue. We have a total now, during Monday, we got seventy-seven renewals, all, we got twelve applications. So, we are almost even with this time last year. We have six hundred and seventy-two with six associates, and we have twenty-seven members for approval on Tuesday. Uh, Ms. Davis will have a membership committee meeting at that time. We've been very busy, um, with particular trying to, um, build our membership up. We have sent out more than two thousand flowers and bulletins, posters within the past few weeks, covering the whole district. We hope that all of you will help us to bring in more members, and we plan to have interesting programs coming up. Thank you.
Um, at this time, I would like to ask the secretary to give you a resume of the executive board meeting that was held Tuesday night.
We had a very nice meeting, and we had some, uh, almost full board present. The board approved the official seal, um, for the fifth district, which is the same seal as, uh, the G S A seal, except that it has Fifth District Georgia State Nurses Association on it. The registry, um, filed a recommendation to the board asking that a questionnaire be sent to the private duty nurses, requesting information from each of them as to, um, the hospitals they wanted to attend, the doctors they wanted to nurse far, and the, um, type of cases they wanted. They seem that this information in the district, the registry would be a big help. Madam President, I believe that the, um, two res- I mean, that the two, um, motions that were made by the board on the resolution, I believe that if we waited for that until after the private duty record, uh, uh, report is given, I believe that it would fit into the program much better.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Um, at this time, it has been our custom to give you an opportunity to tell us whether you would like to reverse the order of the business, have our program at this time, uh, so as to not keep our speaker here, unless she particularly wants to stay. Uh, we have had speakers that were not interested in our business session, and we just like very much to impose this upon them. What is your wish at this time? I wouldn't be a tall surprise if our speaker tonight wouldn't just soon stay with us through the evening. She's gonna stay anyway. What would you like? Would you like to have the program now, or would you like to continue with the report and the business, the audit business?
I would, yeah. Madam Chairman, I move that we complete the business.
It's been moved in seconds, and we say, uh, complete our business at this time. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contra, no. We'll continue with the business there. Madam Chairman, do you have anything further on the program? I thought she wanted to say that. That would check to be broken.
Contra, I would like to make a announcement, I can make progress report. Our theme for this year is death, um, development, and devotion. We anticipate a joint activity for May with the Creeds Committee, and immediately at the close of this session tonight, I would like for you who have agency, uh, administrative responsibility roles, to remain just a few minutes to attend to assist us with the program that we're going to call the C S P. You'll not find out what this is unless you stay. Long as it takes just a few minutes, I think it will enhance our activities for May. We have to kind of embrace the hundred and forty-fourth, um, the founder of our university. We have a very, um, promising activity for July, which is professional practice. I feel that you may take joy in the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Do you have anything for a print?
Uh, we did have some new bill heads with the official seal on it, and, uh, they are hoping, and I think that's one of the reasons we got in seventy-seven members Monday. Uh, many of them would like to have them, and they're not to be transferred.
Ms. May, do you have a report, finance committee? You don't have? Um, we have a report from our chairman of the legislative committee. She isn't here tonight. She sent along a report, and I believe Ms. Hudson is going to give this report for Ms. Ditchfield.
I pass the copy back to, uh, to the secretary.
Did she sign the collective note? Did she send the collective note? Had several corrections? I don't know.
If you don't give it, I'll, I'll give it. I'll read it.
Please. I don't seem to have the collective report.
The committee has not met since last district meeting, however considerable work was counted out during the time the Georgia legislation was in session. Your chairman made many calls in the need of nurses and non-nurses in support of scholarship bills to protect the geriatric, to protest the geriatric nurse bill. Senate Bill one ninety, to create scholarship, create a scholarship commission to make grants to students of damage to social work, nursing, promising, et cetera, was passed. Senate Bill one forty-six, a proposed amendment to the Constitution for scholarship aid to nursing and other paramedical groups also passed. The, uh, public approval of S D one forty, Senate Bill one forty, number one forty-six, will depend upon, uh, public approval at the next election. House Bill number one two oh seven, to provide examination licensing of geriatric nurses while referred to the county committee on hygiene and sanitation, that they are come to the committee, but not passed. According to the Wall Street Journal, February the sixth, nineteen sixty-four, at federal level, that Johnson administration will soon propose an legislative remedy for the nation's shortage of nurses. A five-year plan will cost more than three million dollars. All nurses should be alerted to any bills that may come up, and be prepared to study them and express their wishes to their United States representatives and senators. The best place for confirmation regarding these bills is through American Journal of Nursing, three pages, titled, "At Press Time," or Legislative Views in the Front of the Journal each month. I feel certain that our state legislative committee will keep us informed as to any federal legislative bills that may come up relative to nursing, respectfully submitted out to Ditchfield. Uh, I would add that the, um, that, um, President Johnson presented his, uh, health message to Congress on February the tenth, and on February the twentieth, the chairman of Senate Labor and Pu- Public Welfare, Senator Lister Hill from Alabama, and representative Orrin Harris, uh, they were part of office, so introduced nursing bills. Now, that, well, they were due some February the twentieth, so we have not been able to obtain copies of those bills yet. But as soon as those bills are obtained, they will be circulated to all the, uh, student committees for review and for support. And, uh, until the bills come through Fox Street, it's not likely we can state this time as to what they might provide. But they have been introduced. I do have, uh, it is possible that other bills on nursing will be introduced also, but I don't know if this time I'll be off.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson, for giving Ms. Ditchfield's report and adding your comments to this. This has been a very active committee, and this report certainly shows that they have accomplished a good deal, or helped to accomplish a good deal. Uh, you have a report on membership, you gave it in your...
That's right.
Uh, do we have a report from the nominating committee, Ms. Armstrong? Yes. Public relations, is that...
Will, waiting for Nurse Week to go all out.
Official publications, Ms. Virginia Hall?
She has sixteen subscriptions. May I make one little comment there? For the business of those who wonder about getting your cards for renewal, it will save you time if you send them directly back to them, and we get the fifty cents at the end of the year. They sent us thirty-seven dollars at the end of last year. We are happy to take them in the district, but we only...
Report of Special Committee, uh, now, Ms. Creos, report, uh, towards this time. On Special Practice, Ms. Boye.
Well, I sent my report in, you need whatever.
Uh, thank you. On Insurance, Ms. Belkst. Committee on Functions of A and A, Ms. Gray. Ms. Gray sent a report. And I believe Ms. Maister gave her the registry report with your, uh, report of sections, administrators, Ms. Pope.
I sent in the written report. Uh, I think the only thing I can say here is that we have very new programs, and on next year, April the fifth, we'll be a dinner meeting at Emory University Food Building. You'll be getting notice to come back.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. E A C two, Mrs. Robinson.
We'd like to say that we had a very interesting program in our last meeting on Functions of A and A. We're going to have a luncheon meeting at a place to be determined, a little bit later in our next meeting in May, and the program will be on economic security, public safety, and intersectional issues.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Davis here, General Beauty Report.
She's going to have a dinner meeting on April the fifth, so for the few that are here, please tell them that we're counting on them. We want that General Beauty section reactivated, and they did have a meeting at Emory, and they're hoping to have good programs.
April the fifth.
April the fifth. They'll get notices about it.
Occupational Health, Ms. Sanders.
February, we had an annual membership drive dinner at the Y W C A that was well attended, and, uh, I speak oral, speaking oral, uh, vaccine, and in, uh, April ninth, we have spoken on, uh, conversation laws and the announcements that we've been out.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Try to beat him, Ms. Earth.
February twenty seventh, we had a regular meeting with thirty-three chairs. We had a very interesting meeting with Mr. Hammond, uh, gave us all the latest information on our bill, and about the amendment that went through the South District Committee. So we feel like that we're well at home, and, uh, we're just glad we enjoyed it. He also asked us about how we had, uh, we have some reservations to bring to the field bodies, even after the night.
Yeah, she's supposed to come out. I wonder if everyone has a copy of the resolution we tried to circulate to you, Ms. Earth, please, and ask for your reaction.
Last year, when we started to plan a workshop for try to do state health reception, uh, there were two things that I felt we should certainly burn in and, and come up with and, uh, learn something about. I had a copy of Surgeon General's report of state headquarters, and I remarked that I'd like to have one, but there wasn't two or three copies there, so, and they couldn't let them out. But I secured copies right away, and as soon as I read in that, I knew that we ought to study this and know something about it, and also we ought to know something about the functions of our own, uh, organization. So that was two of the things that I felt I could be a must if we had a workshop. So we devoted our October the seventh, uh, morning program to these two, um, reports. And, uh, we, by the way, we have very good attendance at our workshop. So since then, uh, group codes have been, um, bailed in a little deeper, and, uh, I'm quite concerned about some of the studies that, uh, have been published. So the private duty affected committees brought these resolutions to the private duty section, and they were unanimously adopted to go into use. Uh, I also want to say that we dropped attention, and if you haven't seen it, with the two articles, one was Dave, February, and McCall is March. They are two articles written in American that would be well believed. Uh, this is not the first time that we've had proposed something similar to this. A few years ago, when we celebrated our Golden Jubilee in, uh, Savannah, this was part of this was proposed then, and it was just kind of overlooked. I just wonder if they realize what all it means, but these are the new resolutions we are bringing to mind. Whereas, the diploma students of nursing furnish the majority, furnish the major supply of registered professional nurses in the United States, graduated seventy-eight percent last year. And whereas, more than eighty-five percent of the currently employed registered professional nurses in hospitals are diploma graduates. And whereas, the diploma graduates have for more than fifty years proven their competence and effectiveness in administration and nursing assignments, demonstrating their ability to master new developments in medical science related to nursing and allied fields. And whereas, an increased supply of registered professional nurses is absolutely essential to provide even a minimum supply of patient care. And whereas, the Surgeon General's report shows that to meet minimum goals, we will require more than fifty percent increase in the number of admissions to hospital school diploma programs, and will need to improve, strengthen, and expand existing programs. Page thirty-five, Surgeon General's report. To accomplish this, enough well-prepared faculty members is a critical need in nursing. Page seventeen. And whereas, in National Lead for Nursing Literature, code number fifteen dash one oh nine two, page nine, references made to diploma students as technical and terminal in nature. And whereas, Nursing Science, June, July, nineteen sixty-three, page eighty and eighty-one, S A U's company public.
Accept licenses for practical nurses, and, uh, if they would agree to, uh, let's do away with this, uh, uh, this, um, group, and they got up on their heels, and they said, "No, we will not. The state has given us a license, and you cannot take it away from us." And you can't. Not even the General Assembly can take away from something you've given out. You cannot, you cannot take it away from us.
Couldn't a law be passed, though, that all undergraduates have, that they would have to be licensed as practicals? Couldn't you have another law? Those who got it, keep it.
Honey, you just, that's right. Listen, whenever you get to talking about this law, we get in trouble, just like you did on this scholarship bill. And all those people would do would just be to go over there and tell those people that you, you were in that fracas we had back under two, three years ago, where the licensed undergraduate nurse went down, and the man said he had sore throat, and he couldn't, uh, he couldn't present the bill in the House, and she went down to the hotel and carried a doctor down there with him, and the doctor gave him, uh, prescribed, uh, some penicillin, and she poured fruit juice into him and got him back over on the floor, and the bill passed the House.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, that happened, when you go to, when you go to fooling with this law, and experiences taught us. Experiences taught us that. If any bill is contested, it cannot get out of a committee, and there's certainly enough of them to contest, so that's what we're saying. We just whip it, and that's it. We just have to do the best we can.
You remember that we have a motion that's still standing, that the, uh, we, the questionnaire devised, devised by the Special Committee, and then that goes as far as we got, and refries relative to this motion. I move that a questionnaire concerned with the performance as to, uh, hospital type of case and physician be drawn out by the Special Study Committee, and any consultants that may deem, uh, may deem desirable, and if this, uh-
They may deem, Ms. Gray, they may deem it, the Study Committee.
No, no, the consultants, they may deem desirable, and if this questionnaire be approved by the Board. After the Board approval is given, this questionnaire is to be sent to each nurse, uh, currently a member of the fifth district registry, along with a cover letter of explanation, and that the information obtained be used to, uh, facilitate district calls and re- and I second it.
I second it.
Oh, you did?
Seconded it, fine. First, you want to-
Do you understand the motion?
Well, does that mean that that's gonna be final, and private duty has just got to accept it regardless of all?
No, no.
Coming back to this board.
Coming back to the Board, getting approval.
See, that's what the motion says.
Be approved by the Board, and any private duty nurses for them to work on, be they licensed.
Ms. Hammond, I think I have some suggestions for the committee to be approved under this section. Is there any further discussion on this recommendation, this motion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. Motion is carried. And finishes the registry. Report of section administrators, Ms. Pope.
The N S A section held its regular meeting, was a dinner meeting, at Emory on February the fourth. Approximately forty members were in attendance. The theme of the Business Section was allocation of funds for training for health occupations under the Manpower Development and Training Act nineteen sixty-two, and the amendments signed into law December nineteen sixty-three. Membership elected the Executive Committee to work with the Line Hospital Superintendent Council and other related agencies to hopefully channel these funds to training of persons that would be acceptable to the Nursing Services Administrative Group, as we are the responsible employers of many of these. The next meeting is scheduled for April the seventh. It also will be held in the Food Building at Emory University. We expect a very interesting, uh, program. We have a panel to discuss the current and recent topic heavy read in College Magazine. Uh, we have a administrator, a nurse, possibly a layperson, and a physician, so we look forward to that. Uh, we too had a recommendation in keeping with the one that I believe came from, uh, regarding the general averaging of scores. It is our thinking that the general averaging of scores obscures the abilities and aptitudes of nursing, therefore creates problems in employing graduate nurses from Georgia. We therefore recommend that in the future, the passing score be reconsidered and set more in line with the standard national score, so as not to degrade nursing education and the practice of nursing in Georgia.
Thank you, Ms. President.
I have your full report.
Uh, I have to rerun the file.
I move that that recommendation concerning the Board of Examiners be referred to the Board of Examiners.
I'll say-
There will be a meeting at which all the facets of this question will be discussed, and, uh, I may say, since most of you know I am on the Board, uh, the action which was taken by the Board was not done in a light manner, and what, the, the action which was taken was given very great consideration. And we will give the facts upon which we based our decision at a meeting on March the twenty-fifth, and any of you that, uh, that want to come, you're welcome to come and sit down and hear what the reason why we did it.
Where is this meeting, Ms. President?
One sixteen Mitchell Street. Ten o'clock in the morning. We'll just come on down. We certainly haven't anything to hide, and the action that was taken by the Board was certainly done in the best interest of sick people, and in the light of the developments which we have had to live with. It comes down from national. And we'll explain that, and give you the literature on it, and let you read it for yourself.
Will there be a general announcement about this and such?
I'm announcing it right now.
In other words, have you left up to us if we want to-
If you want to come, come. If you don't, don't. But I can tell you, the literature is there, upon which we based our decision. And it's a matter of, it's a scoring method which was adopted. Well, like, we won't take time now to discuss it. It's gonna be discussed then. You're welcome to come. Twenty-fifth of March at ten a.m.
One sixteen Mitchell.
One sixteen Mitchell Street, the conference room.
With the Board of Examiners.
See about two hundred people. If you want to come, all of you come.
Yes, we have a vote on this, Hudson, the motion that this recommendation be forwarded to the Board of Examiners. Is there any further discussion of this?
Ten o'clock in the morning. We'll just come on down. We certainly haven't anything to hide. And the action that was taken by the board was certainly done in the best interest of sick people and in the light of the developments which we have had to live with. It comes down from national. And we'll explain that and give you the literature on it and let you read it for yourself.
Will there be a general announcement about this and such?
I'm announcing it right now.
In other words, have you left up to us if we wanted to comment?
If you want to come, come. If you don't, don't. But I can tell you the literature is there, upon which we based our decision. And it's a matter of, it's a scoring method which was adopted. Well, like, we won't take time now to discuss it. It's gonna be discussed then. You're welcome to come. Twenty-fifth of March at KNA.
One sixteen Mitchell.
One sixteen Mitchell Street, the conference room.
To the Board of Examiners.
See about two hundred people. If you want to come, all of you come.
Yes, we have voted on this petition, motion, that this recommendation be forwarded to the Board of Examiners. Is there any further discussion of this? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. Motion is carried. Yes, please do discuss.
We had our last meeting, uh, last week, long. And as usual, we had very few, uh, people there. We did have a very interesting, uh, discussion on the functions of the ANA, new panel discussion. In an effort to try to get, uh, more people for meetings, and we suggested that, uh, we have a luncheon meeting since we have our meeting early in the afternoon. So, at our next meeting in May, we hope to have a luncheon meeting. And the committee is working on finding place for us to have a luncheon where it will be, um, uh, a place that we simply locate and, uh, at times when we can't have, uh, in our next meeting, we hope to have it.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, Chairman of the Eastern Division, thank you.
Uh, we, we did have a meeting, uh, February the fifth at Emory. Um, we only had eight members present, two guests. But, um, we hope that that was due, partly due to the weather because it was a real bad night that night. And, uh, Ms. Garland and Ms. Atkins were our guest speakers. And, uh, they gave us, uh, we just, just turned into an informal meeting. And we feel that we did accomplish something from it, though. And, uh, we will have our next meeting, April the fifth. And the notices will be sent out. We don't, up till now, have the program planned. I talked with the committee today, but she didn't, didn't have it completed. But the next meeting will be announced and we'll send the notices out.
We can do that, but...
Thank you. And David, occupational health and changes?
Um, in February, I'm right offhand, I don't know the date, but we held our annual friendship dinner, the W I W. And I believe there were about twenty in attendance in this, uh, membership drive dinner that we have been... And Mrs. Langley will be Red Cross Hope on Saturday or Sunday. And then, uh, next scheduled meeting is the second, third, April, I think, the ninth. And, uh, Judge Altha Peterson is to speak to us on the workforce compensation laws. Now, those notices have not gone out from our section yet for that and has to be held at the Red Cross building. So, and, uh, I see that the membership committee has been working...
Working on membership.
And we, um, set that committee up at our February meeting and so I see that that material is going out for membership drive. And that's all I have to report for that. I believe, oh, I was gonna ask, we've had a change in our secretary has changed, uh, uh, section and Ms. Elizabeth Blankford is now secretary. In fact, uh, she's employed, I think, ever. I forget what section she was transferred to, but she's going on with the same staff.
Private duty and Ms. Zirb.
Uh, February the twenty-seventh was our regular meeting. We had a very good meeting. And our speaker was Mr. Hamilton to bring us up to date on our legislation. He did a very good job of telling us all about it and how it took place. And, um, I feel that private duty section is well informed on our legislative, uh, program in Georgia discussion. He also had asked, acted as our parliamentarian. And in the discussion of, um, the meeting came up about, um, meetings that would be in held at different hospitals. All still about the raise of the private, the private duty's new raise. And, um, they were quite concerned if some of the things had been going on. And so, when Ms. Mason invited me to the meeting, they too knew about meetings that would be in held at other hospitals. And this is a recommendation motion that came out of that. And Mr. Hamilton suggested that they send a motion to the board right away. So, this came out. I move that the private duty section request the fifth district GSNA board to appoint a committee to contact the Georgia Hospital Association Board to discuss and resolve any difficulties arising from the raise in fees of the private duty nurses, which is effective March the first nineteen sixty-four. And then, back last year, when we started to plan a pro, uh, plan a workshop for the private duty section of the state of Georgia. And we were toying with the idea of what, some of the important things that we should include in our workshop. I felt very keenly about some literature that had come out. And one was the Surgeon General's report and then the functions of the ANA. And I felt if we were going to plan the workshop, that certainly should be included in it. And we did include it in our morning program. And, uh, we learned some things, I'm sure, that we didn't know, um, from attending that meeting, that opened our eyes to a lot of things. And since then, some of us have been quite concerned about some things that came out in that Surgeon General's report and have discussed it quite a bit. So, the private duty nurses section, uh, executive committee brought these resolutions to the private duty section for their approval to bring to you. And I would like to say that both these, this one I've just read and this two, received a unanimous vote at our section meeting. And it is, as follows, the resolutions. Whereas the diploma schools of nursing furnish the majority supply of registered professional nurses in the United States, graduating seventy-eight percent last year. And whereas more than eighty-five percent of the currently employed registered professional nurses in hospitals are diploma graduates. And whereas the diploma graduates have for more than fifty years proven their competence and effectiveness in administration and nursing assignments, demonstrating their ability to master new developments in medical science related to nursing and allied fields. And whereas, an increased supply of registered professional nurses is absolutely essential to provide even a minimum supply of patient care. And whereas, the surgeon general's, generals' report shows that to meet the minimum goals, we will require more than fifty percent increase in the number of admissions to hospital school diploma programs and will need to improve, strengthen, expand extending programs, page thirty-five Surgeon General's report. To accomplish this, enough well-prepared faculty members is a critical need in nursing, page seventeen. And whereas, in N L N literature, code number fifteen dash one oh nine two, page nine, references made to diploma schools as technical and terminal in nature. And whereas, nursing science, June, July nineteen sixty-three, page eighty and eighty-one, F A Davis Company publication. References made in proposed recruitment material, in quotations, nursing programs which range in length from two to five years prepare for technical registered nurses' practice. And states further that professional education in nursing is offered only in colleges and universities. Thus classifying diploma programs as technical. And whereas, reference to diploma programs as technical and terminal undermines confidence in diploma programs and is downgrading and discouraging to the schools of nursing upon which our nation is now and will be dependent for many years to come for skilled nursing care. Therefore, be it resolved that fifth district GSNA take the necessary steps to require the N L N and the F A Davis Company to cease and desist, desist printing and circulating this iniquitous propaganda. And further, be it resolved that fifth district take necessary steps to request ANA to encourage and assist the present diploma programs to meet academic requirements and obtain state and local authority to grant degrees so that there may be an orderly transition towards elevating nursing education programs which will not jeopardize the main source of supply of nursing personnel to meet the critical need. And Ms., um... From Crawford Law?
From...
Pope mentioned the article in the calls. We also brought attention to the section about the article in the calls and the last of the February issue, which also states, and flashes them as, uh, technical and terminal. And February issue of the Women's Day also has a article that all should read and pay attention to because it still refers to some of this plain material being published and circulated.
I think Ms. Bryce wants to react.
Oh, I want to react to several things. The one I missed, that I don't see anything, um, that's necessarily low rating or derogating or using the term technical. Um, I think to have, uh, some of the, some of the highest, uh, paid people, some of the most educated people, what have you, in the whole space program, are technicians and highly technical people. I think that kind of has an entirely new connotation today. And I don't think that it's a term that necessarily derogates any person. And this is, uh, it could well be quite the contrary. As far as the terminal part, uh, this, of course, is, is a thing that is, is going on right now in schools of education over the country and schools of, of, of all kinds, even engineering. Has, uh, a, a degree which they grant, which is supposedly terminal in that it is not supposed to articulate with a higher degree. It's a, it's a practice sort of degree. Uh, there are many schools of education right now who are, who are giving the same kind of degree. It seems to be something that's moving around the country. Uh, the whole thing is, I think that there is, there is an increasing current, I'm not going to use the word trend, but there is an increasing current and there is a tendency in this country today to, uh, to not give credit for diploma education in a, an academic degree granting institution. Whether we like it or whether we don't, this is a foot. It is in keeping with sound, the soundness education. When they say terminal, this does not mean that the nurse is not able ever to go and learn more or to get more education. I think it does have a definite implication for whether or not she's able to, um, receive the credit that year before, uh, graduates of diploma programs have received as they entered backfire programs. And there's just one other little thing there also, and I can't quote the number on this, but I do know that there is a, a, again, a tendency toward, uh, the cutting out of the so-called supplementary backfire programs. And, and, and it will either even start at the youngster and go to a backfire program or you don't get enough.
Okay, the President has just sent to Congress, uh, a supplementary bill, the one that was passed last year, uh, for doctors and, um, laboratory technicians and so forth, so on. And nurses were left out of that bill last year.
Couldn't answer that.
So, I'm telling you that the President has just sent to Congress a bill with, uh, administrative, um, action for them to pass with seventy-five billion dollars to diploma schools. And this kind of, this, uh... Seventy-five billion dollars.
Seventy-five million.
Million, million, fifty dollars to the diploma school and thirty-five million to the, uh, collegiate school.
That's fine, glad to hear it. I think it should be strengthened. I just think...
I mean, if this trend is, if, if this is going that way, the surgeon general, um, it came through that, um, health, educational, welfare problem. That's where the, uh, the, uh, President originated this field to Congress. And it is in Congress, it's not...
Well, this is not really my point. The point I'm speaking to is to the technical and the terminal aspect. And that alone, that is all I'm speaking to.
Well, if it's not so sacred and technical is really, is higher than professional, why are they objecting? Why are they objecting to taking away the professional status of the graduates of the diploma schools?
I think technical here is, uh, is adverse to professional, as Ms. Hudson brings out. I mean, I see what you're talking about by technical, Ms. Bryce, but in this connotation, I think Ms. Hudson is correct. I think that, uh, they are saying we aren't professional. And why do they want to say that?
And if you go into a high school and you tell these young students, now, you, the diploma schools are not professional schools. Why, how many students you think you're gonna get? Of course, that's the reason that things all circulate.
Well, when I had a training, we told, we were told we were in a profession. And I still think we ought to be able to keep it as profession. And I don't think they ought to try to take it away from us.
Well, I'll tell you one thing about it. Our nurses need to know that the only hope they have to maintain their professional status is to cling to the American Nurses Association because that's the only thing that's going to hold a professional status for the registered nurses that are currently registered with a diploma. And they better just get the membership right in here, is what I say.
Yeah, how could we say we're all professional? And how can we say that all diploma schools are backfire degree students, uh, graduates, are professionals? And the, our largest percent of mine here in fifth district don't belong to their own association. How can they call it that's professional?
The private duty?
Well, that's true.
Well, the private duty, all joking aside, the private duty has set the pace through that.
Do all nurses that are doing private duty belong to it?
Uh, maybe, yeah.
They do not, they couldn't...
Return to, get on with it.
All that go to the registry, yes, but not to all that do private duty.
Recommendations, Frau, Ms. Zirb. Uh, I'll bring the shortest one to you first, and you can fix that more complex later. I move that the private duty section request the fifth district GSNA board to appoint a committee to contact the Georgia Hospital Association Board to discuss and resolve any difficulties arising from the raise in fees of private duty nurses, which is affected March one sixty-four. That's the order.
Uh-huh, I don't think it can be done, but at least they can try.
I move, I second the motion.
Who did first?
Ms. Zirb.
Ms. Zirb, is you the...
I brought in the motion.
You're the one. Sure, sure. It's fine.
Well, I believe that were notified, were they not, in the recommendation and...
Oh, yes, they were notified.
But, uh, why are they needed for further?
I don't think it's necessary myself.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. Has there been any...
Well, I'll tell you, it's because of all these different hospitals holding special little meetings and, and their little groups. And, of course, they've never come out and told me what it's all about, but they objecting to private duty's raise and a lot of...
tell them what it's all about, but they objecting to private duties raised and a lot of things have gone on that some hospitals are even considering, uh, hiring their staff nurses and, um, paying them, uh, not over eighteen dollars. And, um, the hospital would pay them themselves and then charge the patient for that. Now, that's one of the things that's been rumored and talked around. We don't know any of it for the truth, but we've heard, we do know that the meetings have been held and if there's an explanation and a clarification could be made, we thought maybe the hospital board could kind of help clarify it. There have been meetings held at, at several hospitals and discussions were made, pro and con about how fees going up. And they have all received the proper notification of it, but are they all going to pull out and do this and do that or can we have some help to be unified again?
Or don't you think it's, uh, you have already notified everyone of the raise and I think it should drop there?
I agree.
Now, I don't, uh, I don't...
Well, I didn't make the motion, it was made in haste and unanimous in the, in the meeting and I had to...
You, you're making the motion now, though.
So, I'm making the motion, it's my duty to...
This discussion, Madam Chairman, I think that if I might speak, that it's a bit tardy to bring such to the hospital administrative room. I might say that both hospital administrator in our case and nursing administration also heard rumors and conversation about where private duty nurses going to twenty dollars or where they not. I learned about it by the staff nurses, apparently by way of private duty nurses having re- revealed to them. I discussed it with our hospital administrator and, uh, we have the same, possibly the same dilemma before this prob- probably the private duty nurses are having now. But I think the notice did go to them, uh, they have already been informed. I might say in our situation, we assume in view of the fact that we've always been told in our bylaws, taking the tri- practical nurse, um, three quarters of the, uh, professional nurse, we thought in our situation that the practical nurse rates were fifteen dollars as of March one. Uh, that's in our situation and I, this is what I speak to. I think that, uh, it, I, as far as I'm concerned, it's a bit tardy to discuss this with the hospital administrator.
Let me say one word, here is the copy, I felt this might come out tonight. We have on our addressograph every director of nursing service and the directors of health agencies, including the Visiting Nurse Association. We sent every administrator of every hospital the same letter under the same film, Mrs. Stevens, that went out January the sixteenth. So, Ms. Pope, we're sorry if you didn't get one.
We received one.
Or you did, well, good.
We received one, but we had a discussion almost a month prior to the notice.
That's, that's why I didn't get it.
I didn't get it because I didn't come to the meeting, board meeting, so...
It didn't get voted on from January the sixth and it went out on January the sixteenth.
Ms. Pope, why, who's behind you on that?
I was not here and I learned about it and, um, I'm saying...
Here's, here's copies for anybody that's still, because we sent them to the insurance people.
The rumor just got out first.
My, my medical director, my hospital administrator and I, I think all three got copies of, of the letter informing us, my explanation.
I'd like to speak to that. In fact, it was brought out in the meter before it was ever passed about the, the raise of fees. Before it was ever brought to this board, it was circulated in the meter.
That's right, it showed up.
It certainly was.
Uh-huh, and Ms. Honeycutts?
Yeah, but that's before it was really made a motion.
Well, that was, but that, but you brought it out to everybody before it was even voted.
That's right, that's right. And it shouldn't have been, that's right.
It should have been, we should have a procedure, it should go everywhere before private duty got on it.
I have a question, Madam Chairman. Um, does everyone understand the motion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no.
No.
I believe the motion is lost, but can we have a show of favor? Those in favor, raise your hands please. Three, four, five. Those opposed? All that.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to ask, what is the objection of any group having a liaison committee to work with, uh, with the hospital council, Atlanta Hospital Council? It would certainly save a lot of misunderstandings.
Well, they have been notified to the effect...
Well, you're speaking of this raise, but there, there seems, there should be a sort of a liaison committee or, or, uh, a strong channel of communication there.
Well, there would be, Ms. Hudson, if we went according to our bylaws and had our advisory committee set up, we would have a liaison all the time in force.
Georgia Hospital Association don't have a membership.
Well, we should have a hospital. Atlanta Hospital Council, uh, maybe, uh, could come from the board, a committee from the board, appointed from the board.
But it's not Fifth District.
Have you had anything in writing about this thing or is just written by...
Well, just a lot of talk are about, uh, from a lot of people that don't know what they're talking about.
That's the reason that...
That they don't have, they don't know the facts and they just get a little bit of information and they go running around with it. If they knew the whole truth and the facts about it, they'd understand the wisdom of it.
I don't see any reasoning, private duty nurses are self-employed and if they put the fees too high, they can't get the work.
We're not having the bit of trouble though.
Well, I mean, if you did, and I just feel like that if they are self-employed, then that, um, they could put that...
They are self-employed.
...wherever they want to, if they can.
I was just going to ask, why don't you come back then? Oh, same principle as doctors.
But I'm just thinking that it might be well for the district to have a liaison committee with the, say, the district association, to have a liaison committee with the Atlanta Hospital Council to, so there might be lines of communication, channels of communication.
Well, that'd help these people who are doing these little talking around in these hospitals.
Well, I couldn't tell you about that, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in there for their reasons.
Can we go on with the next resolution and I believe, uh, without repeating the whereages, I'll just state that, uh, the final paragraph reads, "Further be it resolved that Fifth District take necessary steps to request ANA to encourage and assist the present diploma programs to meet academic requirements and obtain state and local authorities to grant degrees so that there may be an orderly transition toward elevating nursing education programs which will not jeopardize the main source of supply of nursing personnel to meet the critical need." The board won't like the explanation of degrees.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
What was the degree?
What kind of degree?
That was proposed back the year we had the Golden Jubilee from the, from the private duty section of the state.
What degree would you be grant, would the three-year programs be granted?
The, uh, it's not, the degree is not the question here. This is, um, a resolution which was voted on by the private duty section and requests it to be brought to the district meeting and it does not require any action from this board.
I move that we present it to the Fifth District Section Meeting.
Which section?
I mean, the Fifth District. Meeting Thursday.
Oh. You mean the district meeting, not the section?
District, Fifth District, yes, I know.
You mean just the Fifth?
Just to go to the whole...
Could we still have a clarification of what kind of degree that they expect from the school?
We're not to work that out. The educators work that out.
The, the, uh, thought, the thought is, uh, as I heard it, the thought there is to assist and help the diploma schools to become academically sound so that this transition could be more orderly.
And that's what it was about several years ago when we celebrated our golden anniversary and ceremony, it was brought at that time.
And, uh, a great many of the schools, I'll just say this, I've been looking into the requirements for colleges and a great many of the hospital schools which are accredited by the National League for Nursing surpass many of the requirements for colleges. You've got, they have a better overall, uh, standards and it's, than, than a great many of the colleges granting degrees and they ought to have some recognition.
Well, I, I'll go along with, uh, the schools have been upgrading the programs.
That's, well, that's what I'm talking about.
But, uh, the thing that I, what, uh, the thing that I am, uh, concerned being so is, uh, and I'm not sure, but it doesn't say granting of degrees. Or degrees, so that... Well, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I mean, as it's so stated, I can't see that, uh, I can see assistance in upgrading the program so an orderly transition may be placed, but to me...
Well, leave out the degrees then.
A, a degree belongs to the college and it's something that, uh, a gra- a three-year graduate should have to look forward to the work for rather than, uh, admitting the three-year programs to grant degrees in essence.
Well, why shouldn't they grant a degree if they excel and achieve the standards that the colleges have? I don't mean that they're to do it in three years. It doesn't say anything about the three years. It, they can go on up to ten years if they want to, but they ought to help these schools to become academically sound.
Ms. Zertz, you want to bring this to the meeting Thursday or you want me to present?
I thought that everything that came from the section had to come to the board and
go through the board to the district.
Has anyone made a motion?
No.
I made the motion, yes. Yes, then they need it.
Madam Chairman, is there some way that we could have copies of this?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm like...
We can have copies of it and then bring, and then bring it up for the next board meeting.
We can get your copies all on...
By Thursday.
Well, we get them to you by Thursday.
We have a motion.
The motion is district...
That's right.
Who seconded your motion?
I did.
Is there further discussion? We're voting whether or not to present this to the district meeting on our Thursday without any further interpretation or opportunity to study.
Well, I think there's so much in there that would have to be digested by me that I couldn't really interpret it by just another reading. I like to have a copy to study it and I just don't think that it should be, um...
Well, when it's brought to the district, they won't have a copy ahead of time either, but if she can make copies.
But, uh, then I think it ought to be circulated to everybody in the district then because I don't think that that can be understood by just anybody on one reading. It, uh, really would create a lot of questions, lots of unnecessary discussion. It ought to be studied by every person in this district. And I have nothing against diploma schools, but I do not see how in the world they can grant a college degree from a three-year course of nursing.
Did you say that?
I believe that all these whereages is given bound to explaining, well, why this resolution was made. That's what, that's the reason of the whereage, is, is where they got the information to come out with this resolution.
We studied it at the pa- at the workshop, they're not sliced off toe bones.
Before then, huh?
That's, that's... That chairman is, uh, substitute motion in all of our love, you know? I'd like to move, to move that rather than presenting it Thursday.
We got to move already.
But that this being, uh, recommendation, uh, finding, finding our recommendations, she, uh, circulated to the membership of this district and we thought that's the next board requirement. She's on her substitution.
Madam President, if the private duty nurses want that read, I don't see why it can't be read and then decide on how you're going to handle it.
They won't, they can take them home with them and be reading them if they want to. I'll give you as many copies as you want.
Didn't she have a motion? Didn't she make?
Yeah, that's such, I won't do it if, if, uh, I'm out.
Um, Madam President, I'd like to speak to that, if I may.
For your three-year old motion.
Uh, just, well...
She's ready to draw her sentence. Speaking of your own motion, that's right, isn't it, really?
I was just wanting to explain something. Um, in drawing up this resolution, uh, this is just to, uh, send it to the GSNA, uh, board in, uh, on a local level to study this.
That's right.
It's not, uh, I mean, we're not voting that we're, we're doing this, it's just a resolution.
This, this Fifth District, it doesn't say...
It takes necessary steps and the necessary...
To request ANA, it doesn't say nothing else.
No, no. It takes necessary...
Necessary steps will go through that.
If you take the necessary steps, it goes to the state.
But you want to just refer them to the state?
Well, it says take the necessary steps.
They have a motion on the floor now that this resolution, we report it to District Meeting on Thursday. This by having this Zertz, we got to do something to this motion before we can do anything else.
Are you ready to vote on this motion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. No. Let's have a show of favor, those in favor. Taking this to the district Thursday. Twelve, four, taking it to the district. Those opposed? And may I make a move, motion?
That, one, the approval of the Fifth District that this be, uh, set, uh, this, uh, resolution be sent to the President of the Georgia State Nurses Association and be circulated amongst the members of the Executive Board for final action.
I second it.
Good.
Do you understand the motion without...
Do I understand that the Fifth District membership will be expected to make action on this Thursday?
That's right.
The Fifth District, it'll be read in the district and according to Ms. Dixon's motion, it will then be referred to the Board of GSNA for final consideration.
If it's approved.
Madam Chairman, I rise to the point of the clarification. We're defeating our purpose in denying our Fifth District the right to negotiate behalf of a motion that's returned to them. This board is going to let us bypass any action of Fifth District.
It's in the, it's in the resolution.
Didn't she say if approved?
That he could take it.
If approved.
She sure did.
We should wait and, uh, cast our...
That's where it's going, to the district.
But the board is trying to handle the district membership.
That's right.
Well, if, if they take the necessary steps, they would have to refer it to the GSNA.
We wouldn't want to go with still action. Oh, how's the, uh, this district couldn't, I mean, uh, this district came bypassed the, uh, state in getting to ANA with it.
That's right, and it says take necessary steps.
And so, this is the, my motion was that upon the approval of the Fifth District that this resolution be sent to the President of GSNA for final action, I'll be, uh, GSNA board. And the Board of GSNA would be sent a copy with our reaction to this so as to get to ANA, uh, in that...
You're assuming that the district at large is going to accept it.
Then this motion wouldn't hold long.
It wouldn't go any further.
It wouldn't go any further.
This motion would...
The motion.
The membership.
It would only take half it between now because we won't have another meeting for that by end of...
I think we're rushing it.
I agree.
I think, I mean, I'm on a table of the diploma schools and upgrading, but I think we're pushing it.
I said that to start with. Pushing it, if we don't push, they go up. I said that start with. Pushing it if we don't push, they go on.
We've been here for years. We've been sleeping here for years.
Don't educate them.
Are you gonna vote on Ms. Dixon?
Well, I, I think if Ms. Dixon, Ms. Dixon, I believe Ms. Dixon, if you wouldn't mind to make your motion clear to say taking the necessary steps, then that's the wording in the resolution, then you're not...
Wait, 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 you want me to put taking the necessary steps?
Then...
That the, uh, GSNA...
No.
Move that upon the approval of the fifth district...
Necessary steps be taken, which is to send this resolution to the board of directors of the Georgia State Nurses Association.
But, uh, upon the approval of, uh, the fifth district that necessary steps be taken to, uh, send this resolution to the president, I'll GSNA for final, uh, action by the GSNA.
That's right, that's right. That's, that's the only way we can proceed.
I don't think we can, as a district, make announcements in our own name. In our own...
Do you understand Ms. Dixon's motion?
I guess.
You ready to vote? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no.
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 Those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, four. I think we all want... One, two, three, four, five, six. I mean, right here.
Put your hand up if you're counting it.
Nine, ten, eleven, four. I think we all want... Those in favor say no. I mean, right here.
Those in favor say no.
It's, yeah, it's, one, two, three, four, five, six. I like to put it up again.
It looks like that same lemon sticks up there.
That's what I mean. They lost the last group.
Is that all you have, Ms. Dixon? Reported Alumni Association's profit law, Ms. Holland. No, forward. Embry, Ms. Canada is not here. Ms. Webb, can you report? Oh, no. Judge Baggers, Ms. Hudson?
We've had a meeting on one of the worst days we could have had in the year and we didn't have, but, didn't have a quorum, but, um, we, there were eleven or twelve there or something and, um, we will have, there will be an election of officers at the next meeting.
Grade number one, Ms. Dixon. Number two, Ms. Bryan.
Well, we had a, well, attended meeting last Friday and as I know, we are working towards homecoming next week.
He's, uh, Ms. Kimball. St. Joseph, Ms. Parker. Under old business, we have suggestions for nominations, GSNA and district. You wanna do this tonight or do it later this night?
Can't be delayed.
Yes. Only thing we want to do is take it to the district meeting on Thursday, because that will be our only opportunity with nursing. And then we, we'll only make it...
We may at that.
On, in May. All sections have been notified and some have already sent them in.
All sections done.
And we were to do it again in May. We've just given you plenty of time. I move that be deferred until next week. But we do want to bring it to this floor Thursday if anybody wants to from this floor.
Does anybody have any new business that'd like to bring to this group at this time? Is there a motion to adjourn this night?
I'm not.